Good evening. This is the Town of Eastchester Planning Board meeting of Tuesday, July 20th, 2021. If everyone will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the right of the United States of America and the Republic, which extends my wishes under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So I'll do the roll call. Mr. Phil Nemisak.
Present.
Jim Bonano is here. Mark Cunningham.
Present.
Louis Campania.
Present.
Great. So I'd just like to welcome everyone to the in-person meeting. It's nice to see everyone in Zoom, but it's great to see everyone in person. We get to see each other and have real interaction. But thank you for your patience during the Zoom meetings that we all participated in, and now we are experts at it. So I think we have one meeting minutes that we can approve while we're here, and that is April 22nd. So we've read them. There's comments that Mr. Nemisak had made. Thank you. So I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of April 22nd, 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So this is a special meeting. We don't normally meet in July, but we are here to discuss three applications. There's a new application, 21-23, and this is the order we're going into. First is 21-23 for Hanfling Road, and the other two are applications we've seen already. The second is 21-22, 750 White Plains Road, and the third, we're going to talk about again, is 1942, Five Ray Place. So if the applicant for the first application would come forward.
My name is Shane Bedali, representing Bedali Engineering at Two Wilson Place, Malvern in New York, 10550. We have before you an application for a horizontal enlargement of an existing one-family house at Four Hanfling Road. Hanfling Road is located roughly a block or two from where New Wilmot, Old Wilmot, and Wilmot Road all meet up. It's a 9,598-square-foot lot in an R75 zone. The addition we're proposing is strictly, I'm sorry, I said horizontal, I meant a vertical enlargement, so we're strictly going up. The addition is roughly 800 square feet, but the footprint of the house does remain the same. In addition to that, we're also proposing a new deck in the rear that's roughly 6 by 23 feet. It has an 11-foot staircase coming down to the rear yard. All of that is within the zoning envelope. We're also reconstructing the 8-foot platform at the front door, as well as expanding the existing driveway within that existing curb cut. So we're not modifying the curb cut, but we are modifying the width of the driveway. Perhaps the angle of the curb cut does need to be modified, but we are seeking a highway permit for that as well. And then finally, in terms of the site work, we also have a legal staircase on the left-hand side of the site there, which also has a door. So we're removing that stair, and we're replacing that door with a window and wall, and bringing the house into compliance there as well. I'm just going to flip the page.
Bring the mic with you.
Yes. I don't know. It's all wrapped up.
All right.
So I just brought up the elevation here, and I'm just going to run through a couple of the changes we're doing and the materials we're proposing. So on the main part of the house, we're doing a two-story addition and providing a gable roof with a portico above the entryway, and that has an arched window that gives off into a two-story atrium at the foyer and then into the staircase. The existing house has shutters, but we're replacing all of the shutters, siding, windows, roofing. So all of that is actually going to be new. We've provided specifications for all of the materials as well. We're also providing an expansion above the garage and above the existing breezeway. So the door that we see on the left-hand side of the front door, which is between the garage and the front door, leads to a breezeway between the garage space and the main house. And so that's why those windows all don't have grills in the breezeway as well as around the basement. That provides that flow-through feel. And then above the garage door, we've also provided a standing seam copper roof, as well as vinyl shakes in that area versus the horizontal siding on the right side of the house. The front door is a bronze entry door with quite a bit of detail in it, and that matches the garage door color as well. We also have some trim work around the windows and some keystone above the windows. Most of the trim is provided as ASAC, and we've also shown some lighting. So we have lights on either side of the front door, as well as lights on either side of the garage door. And on the rear side of the building, we also have some lighting both at the breezeway door, at the patio door, the balcony, and the deck. I'm just going to backtrack on the proposed work and mention that we also have a small balcony coming off the master bedroom on the second floor. So I'm just going to flip the page. Generally speaking, there's not too much going on with the back, but we do have the deck on the right side, which gives off to that breezeway that we were mentioning, and the balcony above it, which gives off onto the second-floor master bedroom, and that new staircase, which comes down on its side, that's to meet the zoning envelope versus coming down straight. And with that, if you have any questions, please.
What's the materials on the back, same as the front?
I'm sorry?
Materials on the rear elevation?
Yes. The entire siding is to match.
Same siding?
Correct. And the shakes would only be on the front of that garage second floor.
Left-hand side. Okay.
I'll just mention also that all of the windows are being replaced. Those are Anderson 400s. They'll be with a black frame. And the siding will be white, and most of the trim work will be white.
Okay. Are there any plantings contemplated with the renovations?
Absolutely. We didn't submit a landscaping plan as a part of the scope of the building permit, but significant landscaping is going to take place in order to make the front yard much more appealing.
Okay. Because I see in the before-and-after photos, there are nice trees on both sides in the after.
The house is not in great shape right now?
Yes, I understand. Okay.
So the landscape plan will be prepared by a landscape architect, and it will be...
Right. Correct. It's beyond my capabilities to do.
Yeah, that's not a condition of approval. I think he was just asking if they were planning to plant plans, yes. But that wouldn't be submitted to our department.
Got it.
Just for new construction.
Okay. And I think I saw the numbers, but it's approximately an 800-square-foot additional living space?
Correct. So the existing floor area is roughly 2,150, and the proposed is 28-something. So it's just under 2,900 square feet proposed.
Okay.
And as far as the additional impervious, there's Coltech going where, at the rear of the property?
Correct. So it's proposed right under the driveway because the expansion is for the driveway, and then the rear yard, I don't know if I printed the stormwater plan with me.
Yeah, if you have it, we'll look at it. If not, we get the idea.
So we provided, you know, subsurface chamber, a Coltech, and that's to the side of the driveway.
Okay. All right. I don't have any other comments. Gentlemen?
No comments here.
So then, hang on, we're just going to do a public hearing, so don't go far. So I make a motion to open the public hearing on this application, 21-23, for Hanfling Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can we, for all time's sake, have Rob recognize anyone in the audience?
Let's raise your hand if you have a comment. Use the hand feature. Since there's no comments, I make a motion to close the public hearing on application 21-23 for Hanfling Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And not to prolong this, I will make a motion to approve application 21-23 for Hanfling.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Very handsome. Thank you.
Good luck. Take care. It's a real big improvement.
Congratulations.
Yeah, good.
Yep. Good job.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming down.
Good luck.
So the next application, 21-22, 750 White Plains Road. Effectually known as Lorna Taylor.
Good evening. I'm Bob Davis, attorney for the applicant. Nice to see you in person tonight. As you know, we've met with you twice before on May 27 and June 24, and we've also had two meetings with the ARB on June 3 and 29. And as we mentioned last time, we've been working extensively with Ms. Yuli and Dr. Greeley on various site improvements and parking and traffic-related matters, a big landscaping plan. And we're very gratified that, having reviewed all of the work we've proposed to update and beautify the site, the ARB has given your board a positive unconditional recommendation by the unanimous vote of the three members who were present at its last special meeting. So we're very appreciative of your holding this special meeting tonight, and we're hoping you'll find it appropriate to conclude the public hearing tonight and to render your negative declaration under SECRA, and finally, to consider granting us your approval. With us tonight, as always, is our project team, Jose Omo Gonzalez, who's the Senior Director of Real Estate Development for Streetworks Development, Diego Villarreali of JMC, our planning and engineering consultants, Ron Hoynah of Design Development, our project architect, and of course, John Canning of Kimbley Horn, our traffic engineer. So we made a full presentation to you of all the modifications of the plan and the landscaping plan at your last meeting, so tonight, we're not going to offer any further formal presentation, but we'll just be happy to answer any questions from whatever member of our project team is relevant to those.
Sure. I watched some of the ARB meeting, and I heard your comments and do not disagree with them. It seemed like you got a very positive reception. But can you just summarize for this board what concerns the ARB, or what comments the ARB had, if any, on your proposed plantings? And I know there were light fixtures that are being gussied up and the like. So if you could just get a really brief summary of what the ARB had to say. Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, Diego Villarreali with JMC, the planning and engineering and landscape architecture consultant for the applicant. The ARB meeting, as Mr. Davis had indicated, it was just a good summary of the overall improvements that were being done to the site. The landscaping around the entire perimeter of the building is going to be replaced. There's improvements to the landscaping along the frontages of the property on New Wilmot Road, as well as White Plains Road. All of the sidewalks are being replaced in and around the perimeter of the building. And again, working with Ms. Yuli, all of this was prepared, documented on a site plan, and it's committed to being done all at once, as opposed to any other types of phases or anything like that. It's all going to be done at one time. The board just really had some general questions about some of the specific planting areas and the types of plantings that were being installed. We did have a landscaping plan that was there. There was a comment regarding the inclusion of maybe some landscape and some uplighting near the main entrances of the building, just to complement some of the proposed landscaping that's going in, which is certainly something we could include. The light fixtures themselves in and around the parking lot are all being rehabilitated and parged. The bottoms are all painted yellow right now. The curb is painted yellow. All that is being removed. You're going to have new parged light pole bases, and the light pole fixtures themselves are being painted black. So everything's just going to get really a nice facelift, and I think the, quite frankly, the ARB was appreciative of the modifications that were proposed.
And Phil, could I just mention that what was presented to you on June 24 was exactly what was presented to the ARB? So it wasn't that they made any additional changes between the meetings.
Yeah, it was a really quick turnover.
It was. It was five days.
Yeah.
Included in the plan was also a number of comments from Dr. Greeley. There were some concerns regarding traffic and the curbed islands, so all of that was incorporated into that plan that was presented to this board as well.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Which, I guess, brings us to the traffic, because I think most of the issues that still are going to be followed are the traffic impacts and parking. So, Dr. Greeley, I mean, do you want, because we've read your memo and we have it in front of us, can you just summarize what you think are the important issues that...
Philip Greeley, Colliers Engineering and Design. We had reviewed the traffic study that addressed the entire site, the redevelopment, various land uses. We found that to be complete, addressed all the issues. We had made several recommendations on traffic control at the existing driveways to improve the control. The site plan reflects those changes. One of the other aspects that we had recommended that is hopefully to be incorporated here is what we refer to as a post-occupancy study. So in the traffic study, there were certain, the traffic and parking study, actually, there were certain items that were identified, such as signal timing changes, adjustments. In this case, we would like to have a post-occupancy study to ensure that the projections were in line and that everything is working appropriately. And then in terms of the other areas of the building and the occupancies, the applicant's engineer had made certain assumptions regarding the uses, and we are fine with those. And if there are any variations, then they would have to come back to the planner and make a determination, and together with me, whether or not it's substantial, they would have to go back to the planning board. So at this point, there's also certain improvements, for example, at the access driveways that will be coordinated with the applicant. And we've also requested that we have a, what we call a work zone traffic control plan. So for example, when their modifications to the curbed islands are being done at the driveways, to make sure that traffic is being maintained properly during that. So all standard items. So at this point, we have reviewed it. We're happy with all the responses, the revisions they've made to the plans, and if there's any questions you have, I can answer them.
Yeah, I'm looking at your July 9 report, and you mentioned the post-occupancy study, and I believe the recommendation here is that it can be completed within six months of the full occupancy of the first 90,000 square feet. Now, if I recall correctly, the total square footage here is about 210,000 or so?
210, 220, something like that.
Yeah, thereabouts. Yes. So how helpful is the occupancy study going to be based on the occupancy of half of the available space?
So what the purpose of that study after the initial occupancy is, the intended use here in that first phase is a little bit unknown. A lot of the other uses that were included in the study, medical offices, it's pretty consistently, you know, from one site to the next, you know what the generation is, you know what the parking is. You've seen it before. So we wanted the opportunity to see how this is functioning, and most importantly, relative to the Route 22 side, where it's going to be the main entrance to this first phase, there's a limited amount of parking there. So we wanted to just make sure how everything is functioning for that 90,000 square feet, including the operation of the driveway at Route 22, and there's some upgrades that they're going to be doing at the new Wilmot Road driveway. We also have some ability to have them, so for example, for the remainder of the space, if it deviates from what was studied in terms of parking or traffic generation, they would have to come back and have us review that to make sure that it's within the parameters. So, you know, normally, you would do the post-occupancy when it's all occupied. We want that look after this first 90,000 square feet, because we'll have a better understanding of what needs to be done. Of course, there's some signal timing changes that they will be responsible to do. That would be an ongoing thing, not just at the 90,000, it would be at the full occupancy.
Yes, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Although, if I could ask the applicant, whoever wants to speak for the applicant, I'm assuming you want to get the building up to full occupancy as quickly as possible, and that you're not going to hold at 90,000 for six months or a year to avoid doing a more detailed study. Has there been any indication to this point that you may be filling more than 90,000 square feet of space prior to that six-month period?
Before the applicant responds, could I just clarify something, too?
Sure.
So we changed the language and the conditions of approval that we provided to you, so it no longer refers to full occupancy of the 90,000 square feet, and I think partially because, for this particular use, we don't know how to define full occupancy.
Okay.
So we just gave it a timeframe after the issuance of the certificate of compliance. So then it wouldn't, so after that, I forgot what it was, three to six months, then that study would be required. At that time, they could still potentially have additional tenants, and they would be included in that study.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was going to...
And I didn't mean to answer for you, but I wanted to clarify that it was a timeframe now, not based on the CC, not based on the full occupancy.
So you've actually answered the question that I was indirectly getting at, but I also want an answer to the question. How is it going in terms of filling more space?
Just to answer Member Nemisak's question, we are actively, the owners are actively negotiating with tenants as we speak. There are a number of serious negotiations going on. So yes, we are trying to tenant it as soon as possible, and we do expect probably to at least have one other major tenant for a major portion of the space within that six-month period.
Okay. And then we already have conditions of approval. Should we approve that would address, including that?
Exactly. That's what it says. Yes.
Okay. Perfect.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Greeley, by the way. I think most of the conditions of approval that we have in front of us pertain to items that you brought up and you discussed, and there's other ones here. So I think for the most part, it's pretty clear as to what has to be followed up on.
Yes.
You've certainly provided all of that guidance. Thank you. That's it. So this is still an open public hearing, so we're going to see if there's any members of the public to comment on this application.
So you should make a motion to reopen the public hearing.
Have to reopen?
Yeah.
Okay. So then I make a motion to reopen the public hearing on application 21-22, 750 White Plains Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then I make a motion to reclose the public hearing on application 21-22, 750 White Plains Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Do you, just maybe for the record, I'll just mention that you received copies of proposed conditions of approval, and the applicant received a copy as well. They're also available in back in case any residents are curious about them.
Yes, sir.
But I don't know if you need to discuss any of them, but otherwise, you were provided with them earlier today.
Right. We have, I'm not going to read them. It's quite luminous.
No.
But they are thorough.
Well done, though, I must say. I had it at lunchtime today, so.
I had it at lunchtime.
Very nice reading at lunchtime. Very thorough. Good job, Mo.
Thank you. I scanned it on the train.
That counts.
I'm sure Phil read it. Thank you, Phil. Okay, so...
Is everything spelled right?
Obviously, not carefully enough, right?
So then, I think it's, so we're done.
No, you want to adopt a negative?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I got it. I got it right here. So I make a motion to adopt a negative declaration for application 21-22, 750 White Plains Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then I make a motion to approve application 21-22, 750 White Plains Road, subject to the conditions provided to the board and discussed at the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you for the...
Good luck.
Make it work.
Thanks for the design.
For the rest of your summer.
Yeah, thanks for the design.
Yes.
Came out very nice. Thank you. Now, the next and final application is 19-42, Five Ray Place.
This was in response to one of the traffic engineer comments, so I think he'll present that a little bit later.
We're good.
Yep.
Good evening, Chairman, and members of the planning board. My name is Rick Bolander. I'm with JMC. I'm the civil engineer on the Five Ray Place project. And just a quick, brief summary of the Five Ray Place project. We're proposing multifamily residence of 21 units. And at our last meeting, there were several comments, concerns that were brought up in regards to construction staging, the safety plan, excavation operations, and the sanitary sewer mitigation. We have since provided several documents to address some of those comments. One of the documents was the drawing C200 to the JMC Erosion and Sediment Control Plan, which had a comment on it from Mr. Greeley that I'll touch on towards the end of my presentation. A proposal from Vanguard, who is the, who will do the vibration monitoring during the demolition and the rock removal. And we've also provided the soil boring report from Carlin and Simpson, just describing the height of rock throughout the site. Also, a rock removal sketch from Brooker Engineering, a scope of work from Cortese Construction, who will be the contractor on the project, and three work zone traffic control plans provided from JMC. Just to touch briefly on the submitted documents, I'm not sure if you had a chance to review them. The scope of work provided from Cortese Construction, it just broke down, one of the concerns at last month's meeting was just the staging of the project and the phasing of the project. So in that, in that document, he kind of just breaks down the phasing, which is, will be broken down into four phases. The first phase obviously would be the installation of all the sediment erosion control measures, along with some of the demo, which is mostly consisting of the removal of asphalt, curbing, and whatnot. The next phase will be, that will contain the rock removal, that's the excavation of subgrade, and the installation of the stormwater detention system, along with the whole stormwater system as a whole, inlets, piping, and whatnot. The next phase is excavation for the building footings, and then the pouring of the footings and walls. And after the walls and footings have cured, that will be, the next step is backfilling the subgrade. And then the final phase of that portion of the project is the off-site work, is the work along Ray Place, the trenching for the sanitary and the water, and the installation of the sanitary and the water. The next document, just to briefly summarize, is the proposal from Vanguard. There was concerns about just the structural int... There was concerns, um, about just the structural integrity of surrounding buildings during the vibration, during the rock removal, um, and they have kind of outlined, uh, what, how they will provide, um, vibration monitoring. They will also provide a pre-construction, um, evaluation of the surrounding buildings, the surrounding area prior to the start of construction to ensure, um, everyone's safety. And, um, the vibration monitors will be set up at the site in between, um, the site and the, and twenty-four, the twenty-four enclave property. And the readings from this vibration monitoring will be, uh, provided to the owner, to the contractor in real time on a website. If, you know, if something should happen, they will know as, you know, immediately. And, one of the main concerns, I kind of wanted to talk on this last, just because there's been so much concern about this, is the sanitary sewer mitigation. And we have, um, talked a whole lot about this and done a whole lot of research on this, and we've come to, um, an agreement between the town, the client, um, to provide, I'll kind of just summarize what we came up with. Um, obviously, the, the manhole of concern is at the intersection of Woodruff and Scarsdale Avenue. Um, I think we're all very familiar with the problems that go on there. Um, so it kind of, it's a three-part, uh, mitigation solution, at really four parts. Um, the first part, we would install a manhole at the, there's a, there's a structure, the, you know, the structure that surcharges at the intersection of Woodruff and Scarsdale Avenue, that flows to, um, towards the intersection of Scarsdale and Harney Avenue, and Harney Road. There's, it's about a five-hundred-foot run of pipe without a structure in between, um, so we're proposing to install a doghouse, um, a manhole in that area, just to assist in the, in the cleaning of that pipe if it needs it. Um, that pipe will also be videoed, this is the second part of the, the mitigation, that'll be videoed to look for any, um, just the condition of the pipe, um, if there's any certain places, um, to repair that pipe. And the third portion, um, will be, there's going upstream, um, on Harney from the manhole that I was just speaking about, um, at the intersection, it used to be an intersection and then the roads, um, were realigned, um, at Harney and Brook Street. And it, the manhole, um, it splits with two, with a pipe going down Woodruff and then a pipe going down Harney. And, uh, we are proposing to repair, clean out and, and do whatever we have to do, um, to make sure that manhole is operating, um, to its full function. And, kind of the last part of the mitigation, um, as I said, you know, we will video, um, the sanitary sewer line running from the, the, the manhole at the Woodruff and Scarsdale Avenue intersection to the Harney and Scarsdale Avenue intersection and obviously repair, um, any problems with that up to a certain amount of, of money, obviously, could, you know, there could be nothing wrong with the pipe, there could be a lot wrong with the pipe, but we have capped it at that, at, uh, a certain amount of money. And, there was one specific comment, um, from Mr. Greeley, the traffic consulting engineer, about on the, on C two hundred, the erosion and sediment control plan, uh, the limited disturbance is also shown as a construction fence, which if you, um, if you're familiar with the drawing, it's out in the, um, out on Ray Place, so Mr. Greeley asked us to put together the, the work zone traffic control plans just to address the fact that we will be doing work within the road and how we would handle, um, you know, shifting lanes and handle traffic and handle pedestrians. And, um, I have provided those three drawings, I kind of split it up into three phases, um, the trenching for the sanitary sewer line, which is on the, I guess that'd be the, the west side of, of Ray Place and the, and the water line, which is on the east side of Ray Place, and then just kind of the work that's confined to our site. Um, and that was really it for comments and concerns, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. There was a lot, you know, provided to you guys, so I, I anticipate questions and fire away.
Yes, we have to ask questions then. So I, I think you described, do utilities go in during excavation or is that the first thing that goes in, that's?
So that would be towards the end of the excavation, that would be in the, I'll, I'll call it the third phase, um, where we would, the, the excavation for the building footings would take place, the, the footings would be poured, the walls would be poured, and then the next phase would be the construction along Ray Place, the installation of the sanitary and the, and the water.
Right, so before they start superstructure, the utilities go in, they don't occur at the same time?
I couldn't hear you.
So before they start construction of superstructure, if the foundations are done, the utilities go in and once that's completed, then they start erecting the building?
Then they would, it would, it would be, the utilities to the building would be stubbed out.
Right.
Um, just so the connection, so they could, um, install along Ray Place and then connect into those stubs that they've already installed onsite.
I see, okay. And as far as the two utili-, the utilities, there's one on each side of the street, I think you said, water on one and?
Yes, I'm not, I might be mixing them up, but I know that it's, it's essentially on one side of the street, not, you know, not extreme, but just enough, um, where we could safely, um, shut down a side of the street and obviously have flagmen out there to, to control traffic coming from the Chichico's parking lot coming down and then from Brook Street coming up.
Right, so at the end of every day, the plates will be installed and?
So the plates would be installed, all the cones would be taken off and it'd be two-way as soon as the workday is done.
End of the day, okay.
So then the utilities would not be installed simultaneously, it'll be one after the other? We just, we thought it'd be safer, we thought it'd be just, it would make a lot more sense doing it separately. Right. Um, just to limit the amount of disturbance and just, you know, safety.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, so as, sorry, go ahead, Mark.
No, go ahead.
No, as you said, there's two issues, the INI issues, which I think we're going to ask Mr. Tramelli to comment on, and then, uh, and also the rock. And then as far as the traffic issues, um, I imagine it's all, it's all been resolved, but I think we'll ask Mr. Greeley if he has any further comments when you're done, so in the meantime, Mark.
Well, the remedial work, um, that, for the sewer system.
Yep.
Um, that, that has nothing, well, I mean, not, not that it doesn't have anything to do with the building, but that's part of the, uh, conditions.
Yes.
Will that work be done first in phase one?
So, um, that still needs to be finalized and we'll coordinate with the town, um, but we anticipate that being prior to, uh, the C of O, the issuance of the C of O.
Okay, so we have a building up and if that doesn't work, then we have a problem, so it just seems.
No, it's, again, it's not that it doesn't work, they are clearly providing mitigation measures, so they will have to have installed those mitigation measures, but those mitigation measures will be, provide mitigation, it's not a matter, so, so they will work to the extent that their, you know, a new manhole will be, uh, a manhole will be repaired and replaced, a manhole will be installed.
No, I understand, I, my, my choice of words probably wasn't right, that it wouldn't work. I, I understand that it works now, there's issues with it, so this remedial work will make that system better. So I just think from my perspective is that with that system fixed and a remedial work done, that you have all, that, that time to see that this is actually an improvement to the system as opposed to waiting till the end when the building is up.
Yes.
And seeing that it, it hasn't corrected, you know, or, or helped.
But, but it's not, it's not a condition to approval, uh, the, the, the town has negotiated the mitigation efforts, right?
Yeah, because, and I think.
It's a, it's a condition of what I read today.
No, it's a, it's a, prior to us issuing this certificate of compliance, they have to implement these mitigation measures.
Yes.
But, but, but that's, you know, this is going to be a horrible analogy, but it's kind of like installing a stop sign and then you're saying, well, is the stop sign working or not? I, you, you know, they, they have to ins-, provide certain mitigation measures, but I don't think that there's a, um, data point that then we're looking at to see whether it's successful or not.
Yeah, threshold.
It's successful to the, yeah, there's no real threshold. It's successful to the point that now we have a new manhole, so the highway department can more easily clean out an existing sewer pipe. It's successful to the point that a broken manhole will be repaired and replaced. It's successful to the point that we'll identify whether a, a segment of pipe has any problems. It's successful to the point that if it does, those will be repaired. But there's no threshold or data point to, where you can make a direct correlation between what they're building and improvements that you see. And, and this, this sewer shed, or whatever you call it, is very big, so there's so many other properties feeding into that line on Scarsdale Avenue that, that it, you know, it may take many different mitigation measures from the town, from different applicants, et cetera, to address that issue. So this applicant is basically providing mitigation relative to the flows that he's added, adding to the system and that's it.
Yeah. And, and, uh, the town has been, the town's interests have been capably represented in the process.
Absolutely.
And, you know, certainly the, uh, I, I, I know we talked about how, you know, there were, there were other potential measures that could be taken, but that were cost prohibitive.
Not feasible at all.
Not feasible, not, not, not proper to try to foist on, on one applicant, uh, or this, this particular applicant. Um, so the, the, the thought is the town was capably represented in the, um, negotiation is, I don't know if that's the right word, but, uh, the discussion that, 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 um, surrounded this, um, you know, identifying an appropriate mitigation effort, that obviously the town believes is going to help. We wouldn't, I, I know Joe wouldn't be picking something out that would just make work.
That's my point.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, and my, my.
That was my point.
But the point is if it doesn't work, it isn't because, um, you know, the, the applicant didn't do what they promised to do, it's just that somehow, despite all the best efforts, um, the, you know, and, and who knows, there are many other circumstances in play, nobody i- is guaranteeing a hundred percent success here.
No, and again, I, I'm just really concerned about how this keeps getting expressed.
Yes.
The applicant is not responsible.
Absolutely, yes.
And, and to solve that problem down at that one particular.
Correct.
We are hoping that these mitigation measures will, will make a difference.
It's a best guess.
But they will alleviate it.
It's a best.
And, and they will alleviate it.
Yes.
It may not solve it, but it, it's, it's a step and it would be wonderful if it solved it, but maybe it takes five other developers.
That's right.
You know, to contribute to the town before you actually notice success. So I just, the way we're defining success is scaring me a little bit.
Yeah, it's not a quantitative thing, it's a qualitative thing, that measures being put forth, our consultant will pay attention, make sure he agrees with them as long as his concerns are expressed, and I imagine he will be involved.
Yep.
And, and just by the way, to backtrack a little, one of the conditions of approval for Lord and Taylor, right now, they're actually decreasing flows into that system. But one of the conditions of approval is as new tenants come in, they are going to have to address how that affects the sanitary sewer flows. Once they increase the flows over existing conditions, they too will have to provide some kind of mitigation measure. That building is within the same system, so, you know, they'll, they'll be required to do something very similar and, and maybe then you'll see some tangible, you know.
Okay, not to belabor the point, thank you, we, we got it, so I don't have any other questions, I know way too much about INI. Um, but I think, can we just, Mr. Greeley, is there any comments or Dr. Greeley, is there anything you would like to offer on the, uh, traffic and?
Uh, Phil Greeley, Colliers Engineering again. Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, so, uh, we have, you know, reviewed this application from the start, okay? Um, one of our concerns was how during construction, traffic would be maintained. We didn't want any backups, we wanted access to all the properties, so the plans that were prepared, what we call work zone traffic control plans, uh, sometimes they're not prepared until the applicant is ready to go to construction. They've actually prepared those, show how they're going to maintain traffic flow, keep access to the different properties on Ray Place, such as the enclave, it's very specific that they have to maintain full access to each of the properties while they're doing the work. Uh, their progression is logical in terms of working on one side of the road and then transferring it. Um, so they've provided the information, um, there are a whole series of other, you know, recommendations in terms of conditions of approval that we have on resurfacing the road, upgrades to the sidewalks, et cetera, but we've talked about those in the past. So, our, our last remaining issue was to just see how during construction they plan to, uh, coordinate, and they've provided those documents, so I think we're, uh, set with that now.
Right, I asked Margaret the same sort of question earlier today or yesterday about the, um, what goes on during construction and when all these things are addressed, and she mentioned that during the construction kickoff, a lot of these, a lot of these issues are addressed when all the municipal agencies are there and you're a part of that process also?
Yes, so in this case, we have the county involved because Brook Street is a county road. I will be involved in that process as well as the, the police department and the emergency services. So we usually have a kickoff meeting with the contractor because, you know, the engineer designs the plans, but we want to make sure the contractor is aware of everything and also to inform the public. So advance notice of when the work is going to start, when, you know, the, the sequencing is there. So I think it's important in terms of communications for everybody going forward.
I appreciate that, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And so then, Mr. Tramelli, if you just sort of, maybe, I, I know the applicant gave a lot of comments about the INI and certainly if you could give your nod, or I think we know enough about it, I'm sure you were part of discussions.
Diddle, diddle doesn't work, right?
You do not have to try and quantify what's going on, just give us your assurances that everyone's best interest is being represented.
Yeah, and this, this mitigation was an effort not only by the applicant, our office, with Margaret, highway department, um, collective, you know, kind of search and find and, and look for avenues that would make sense in this particular instance. Um, as was said repeatedly, this was, this is not meant to be a, a cure-all, it's just to offset the potential impact from this development. And I think with the combination that we have and what's being proposed, uh, we'll certainly see a benefit, the, uh, just to add to, uh, Mr. Bolander's comments, the, the manhole in Harney Road, typically manholes in a sanitary system as you flow downstream, they combine flows and they continue on their way. This particular manhole, uh, the downstream flows are split. And there's a primary discharge along Harney and a secondary route down towards Woodruff. And, and inspecting that manhole, the invert, um, you know, over the years, it's an old system, uh, it, it's in need of a fix. So, uh, with, the, the plan is to make those repairs to that invert, reestablish the primary flow onto Harney, which would take that, that flow that is currently going towards Woodruff out of that, uh, that section of the sewer. It ultimately all reconvenes and, uh, converges back at Harney before it goes under the parkway, but we'll, we'll short-circuit that longer route that it's taking right now to Woodruff. Um, the cleanout manhole on Scarsdale Avenue, again, uh, as was said, those manholes today are about five-hundred feet apart, which doesn't meet current standards. The length alone makes it difficult to maintain, but to make matters worse, the manhole at Harney is approximately forty feet deep, so just to physically get something in there to maintain and, and scope that section of the line from the downstream manhole up is next to impossible. So installing that interim manhole will certainly help the town be able to maintain and inspect that line. Uh, and then, uh, you know, should anything come of the sewer inspection on that section of line on Scarsdale Avenue, we'll work with the applicant and his engineers to determine what the best course of action would be for the repair to that line, obviously what the, uh, the cap of, uh, the not to exceed cost in the resolution, keeping that in mind.
Okay, thank you. Um, right, I, I'm, you're the expert, so if you're okay with it, I'm okay with it, I'm not going to question anything, I'm an expert in something else, so, thank you. Um, so then this is, I guess I have to, any other questions up here, guys?
Jim, can I just say a couple of other things very quickly?
Oh, wait, sure.
So I, I just, you know, I know there are some people from the neighborhood here and I think they saw that the draft conditions of approval are available for anyone that's here, if they want to review them, they're on the back table.
Oh, okay.
And, and one thing that I want to point out just to the board that is a, a little more unusual for us, only because we have not had this particular circumstance very often, um, we are retaining a structural engineer, so with regard to the rock removal activities and the applicant did provide you sort of a timeframe with regard to those, and I, I think the rock removal activities are only within a two to three week timeframe overall, but we are going to have them take all those documents that they submitted and sort of come up with more streamlined, uh, rock removal protocols, and I have a structural engineer that will be reviewing those. And that, that'll specifically identify the properties that need to have a, a pre-construction survey or a pre-monitoring ser-, pre-chipping survey, if that's what they're doing, uh, where the monitoring, the vibration sensors will go and that kind of stuff. So even though the applicant has proposed that already, we're, it's, it's sort of like developing the maintenance and protection, a traffic plan, it's consolidating everything into one plan that then will be reviewed by our structural engineer, um, so I just wanted to put that on the record.
Yeah, that's a good point, that was the other issue. And, um, Yeah, that's a good point, that was the other issue. And as you pointed out, we have our expert that's going to be following that also closely, so it's not going to go unnoticed.
By the way, I think it's worth repeating what Mr. Tramelli said, that he didn't just make this decision, he had input from the planning department, from the highway department, from various stakeholders in the town, who are all out to represent the best interests of the town.
Right, he's just the.
The spokesman.
Orchestra leader.
The conductor.
Doctor. Great. So no other comments, so then I will have to reopen the public hearing, so I make a motion to reopen the public hearing on application 19-42, 5 Ray Place.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So before we start, the issues we're discussing that are in front of us right now are the ones that we've already put forward. There's the rock removal, and a limited number of INA-type things, but as far as the massing in the building, I think we fit on that. So if we could confine our comments to the issues that are in front of us today, that would be best. That being said, public? Sure, come on down.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Andrew Brodnick, I'm an attorney, and I represent the enclave in an Article 78 proceeding that was brought with respect to the variances that were issued by the zoning Board of Appeals. That was a close vote, three to two. Of course, I believe there's a lot of merit to the Article 78 that we brought. In response, the applicant brought what I think can fairly characterize as a procedural objection, a motion to dismiss, which is currently pending before the court. It will take months for that to be decided, and if the motion to dismiss is decided, at that point, the applicant will then put in an answer, and then the court will rule. And the reason I'm going through that procedural background is a concern that certainly, those are not issues that's before this board, and this board's going to continue reviewing the application, and ultimately deciding whether or not to issue site plan approval. If and when site plan approval is granted, that could create sort of a conflict, where the applicant has the ability to go ahead, get a building permit, start building a building, but we could still have the issue of the propriety of the variances hanging over everybody's head, so to speak. So I'm suggesting that perhaps, when the board, if the board does grant site plan approval, perhaps it could be conditioned upon the resolution of the Article 78 proceeding. If that doesn't happen, there can be additional litigation. It just seems to me to be the sort of the logical thing that the board could consider doing. It's possible that the applicant may decide for itself to hold off on applying for a building permit, and waiting for that to be resolved, but I just thought that was an issue that should be brought to the attention of this board.
Great, thank you, I wasn't aware of that, but it's certainly helpful to know. But I think, like you said, the applicant can make their own decision. The applicant can make their own decision if they want to proceed.
They could. If they do, then we've got a whole mess. We are, whether move for injunctions, and this, that, or the other thing, and again, I don't want to argue the merits of the Article 78, it was a close vote, it was three to two, there were some serious procedural issues that were raised, as Margaret well knows, and I just think it would be certainly advantageous, and I think just good process, if that issue could be addressed, if and when site plan approval is granted. It could be perhaps conditional upon the resolution of the litigation, or perhaps, again, I could work something out with the applicant. I'm friendly with Dan Tartaglia, who's the attorney, maybe I'll reach out to him the next week or so, but I just wanted to bring that issue to the attention of the board.
Yep. If I could ask, in connection with the Article 78 proceeding, has there been any motion for temporary relief, a temporary restraining order, preliminary injunctive relief, that would stop the process? Has there been any such application?
There has not been, no, no.
But it sounds like you're asking us to kind of stop it.
Oh, no.
When you may have the ability to do so in front of the court in the Article 78.
I would have that opportunity, if and when site plan approval is obtained, I could, if there isn't other arrangements made, make such an application before the court.
Okay, got it.
And also, just so that you know, we do have Land Use Council that's been working on the Article 78 proceedings, and, yeah.
Yes, okay.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Michael Fasiglioni, 43, Woodruff Avenue, a 57-year resident at Woodruff Avenue, a lifelong resident of the town of Eastchester, and a member of Northeast Chester Civic Association. May I say, it's a pleasure to finally be able to have a meeting face-to-face, and after all those many months of Zoom meetings, which at best were difficult to control, and had many restrictions, as we saw it. Basically, I'm here to just bring up two nagging issues with reference to the Ray Place project, that never have been truly answered to our satisfaction over the 12 months, basically, of Zoom meetings that we've had. The first item makes reference to, basically, a question as to why the developer has not been required to produce any financial comparatives, showing compliance with Eastchester Law Number Five, which makes reference to, basically, zoning board use of variances. And I will quickly quote what I'm trying to refer to. "No such variance shall be granted by the zoning board without showing by, showing by the applicant that applicable zoning regulations and restrictions have caused unnecessary hardship."
I'm going to stop you there.
Yes.
Because you are quoting something that is potentially an item pending before a zoning board, which this is not, and you know that, and also, you are misquoting the law, because that is the standard for a use variance.
Yes.
They requested area variances. There is no issue of financial need or hardship that is applicable for a use, excuse me, for an area variance. That has been explained on a number of occasions.
I see. Pardon my ignorance, could you describe the difference between a use and an area variance?
A use variance is where you wish to change the use of a property.
I see.
And if you are using, seeking the change of the usage of the property, your argument would be, or the burden that you would have to overcome, is to show that you can't use it for its designated purpose because of undue financial hardship. With respect to an area variance, you are, if your project is at variance with the law, you are asking for special permission based upon certain circumstances, in terms of setbacks, in terms of other things. Financials are not relevant whatsoever.
Okay.
That issue has been brought up time and time again by members of the public, and each time, we've explained, and I'm in a difficult position here, because there is a viewing audience that is watching at home, and I want to make sure that the law is quoted accurately, or is applied accurately.
I understand. Mike, final question concerning that, pardon the tutorial. Where does the area variance appear in the zoning laws? Does it appear as part of that Section 10? Because I did not see it.
Margaret, do you have the zoning law here?
Yes, and I just want to make.
I make reference to Section 10 of the local law, Number 5.
Yes, so it's Section 10B2. So it's just Section 10B2, and Section 10B1 talks about the unnecessary hardship, which relates to a use variance. 10B2 states the requirements for area variances.
Well, that's, I was going to bring up 10B1, as part of my defense here, the fact that it says, "The applicant cannot realize a reasonable return, provided that lack of return is substantial, as demonstrated by competent financial evidence."
So, Mr. Fasiglioni.
And the point I'm trying to make is, if it says that, and again, I'm, you know, I didn't write the law, but if it says that, I'm sorry.
Again, as Mr. Tedesco indicated to you, two different issues. The zoning board has already made their determination. As you know, residents filed an Article 78 based on that determination. Now, that was not one of the arguments that was made in the Article 78, because again, there's two very distinct, different types of applications for variances. A use variance, because it deals with actually changing a permitted use within the district, has a very higher threshold for approval. And one of that, and it has a number of different thresholds, and it's very difficult to obtain because of that. And one of those is, an applicant has to show that there's true financial hardship with regard to them getting any kind of reasonable return on their property. Area variances, there's not a very large threshold, they're much easier to obtain, and those deal with the lot and bulk requirements, and just making a, convincing a board that there won't be an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, that it's not terribly substantial. So there's different tests for area variances, and I think that's what Mr. Tedesco was telling you. The use variances absolutely don't apply to this particular application.
I see.
But even if they did, that was before the zoning board, and there's been an Article 78, or a lawsuit filed against the zoning board for their determination. So if the zoning board misunderstood something, or did something inappropriately, that would be addressed during the Article 78, but not before this board.
I see. Thank you very much. I'm going to go back and reread that law again, see what part I missed.
Yeah, well, I'm pretty much convinced.
It's part of my evening reading. I'm just going to quickly touch on a second portion of what I feel is important. The fact that during the entire procedure, this 10-to-12-month procedure, planning board, zoning board, and back here at planning, there has never been a time when the developer has been asked to supply some sort of an alternate proposal to this project, and we, that would sort of more closely comply with the town laws. In fact, at one of the meetings on November 20th, I made a very non-professional proposal, but what I thought would be a very good compromise, which would enable the fourth floor, a fifth floor to be taken off, and a reconfiguration of the parking structure, so as to be able to add additional apartment, build apartments there, and maybe have some sort of a compromise. To be very blunt with you, it was just shot down, it was ignored, the ZBA didn't think it had any merit, and they just sort of covered it, covered it over. But the point I'm trying to make is that, we as residents of the Northeast Chester area have been diligent in trying to fight what we consider overconstruction in this area. We've done it, there have been a couple of other projects that have come through, which we've been able to slow down, because we thought that they were just not keeping, in keeping with the quality of our town. And we feel that this building is, although it's a beautiful building, is just an overconstruction, and it's going to cause a number of different problems. And so what we're asking you to do is, please don't make a decision this evening, look carefully at this. I see that there are a number of proposals that are being made, which, in a sense, are based upon moving forward. I'm just concerned with shovels going in the ground before this has been fully resolved. So I ask you to please give this another look, and try to see whether we can come to a more agreeable solution. Thank you so much.
I just also want to point out, in the conclusion of your comments, one of the reasons that the applicant are here tonight is because there were a number of issues that were raised, appropriate issues, by the public. There were questions about, you know, what is the schedule of construction going to be? Where are the trucks going to be lined up? What about the rock removal? And are they going to blast, or are they going to excavate the rock? How are we going to know when that's going to happen? And so, in a response to that, the board requested that they come in with this information. If you are going forward, how do you propose to do it? That is why that was done. This is in direct response to concerns raised by the community.
I understand. As long as it's, as long as that "if" is written in capital letters, I'm very happy. If.
And if I could comment on a couple of things. One, this is a 2019 application, I know this was before us.
Yes.
I think we were the first board to see this.
That's correct.
In 2019. So it hasn't been like 10 or 12 months, it's been well over a year and a half, and granted, we have had a lot of disruption. I think we made up all of the lost meetings that, you know, from March and April of last year. So it has been before us, and it's been before the zoning board of appeals.
Yes.
And the point that you raised about, you know, the proposal you had in November of last year, and I recall your proposal.
Yes.
About reducing the size of it. That again, and I don't want to steal Rob's thunder here, if you look at the, because I pulled it up here, the zoning, the town zoning law, Section 10B2C, actually says that "The zoning board of appeals in granting area variances shall grant the minimum variance that it shall deem necessary and adequate." And so that is a requirement of the zoning board, that they actually look to grant the least variance from the approved zoning law, that they can, while maintaining the integrity of the application. And I'm certain, or I didn't view all the zoning board meetings, but the fact that we were told it was a three-to-two decision, and certain strong arguments were made on both sides, and it was a close call, and that decision was made by the zoning board of appeals. It isn't our decision, although we certainly have considered, you know, all of these issues, all the issues that are appropriate for the planning board, in our process, and it's been a very fulsome process.
I do understand that.
And I know we've heard from you, Mr. Fasiglioni, many times.
Yes.
Albeit not always in person, like today. And we appreciate it, and we consider very carefully all of the input from the town.
Being that the planning board is the lead board in this matter, and that, to me, makes me understand, although the zoning board made a decision, the final decision is yours to make, and again, we plead that hopefully, we could come to some sort of a compromise that would make us all a little happier. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Charlie Gallinick, 21 Potter Road. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and fellow members. This evening, they were talking about four different items that they were talking about for the storage area. One was the manhole on Woodruff and Scarsdale, and then number two was cleaning and videoing, and then number three was upstream from Harney Road to Brook Street, and number four was pretty close to number two, it was videoing two lines, but it didn't say cleaning, two lines, it said video. So number two and number four, pretty close. On Scarsdale Avenue, the Northeast Chester Association has been to the town, I would say probably 10, 15 years, about a problem with that water when we have major storms. And one of the fix, or Band-Aids, that was applied, was to weld the sewer covers. I mean.
What's what?
You're the zoning board. Is that?
Not the zoning board.
Well, I'm sorry. He knows. This is not the zoning board. I'm sorry, thank you, I appreciate that. But this is something that we have a fix? It's not a fix, it's a Band-Aid. Now, the reason why I bring that out, if that was a problem for all these years, how come all of a sudden now, we have interest in trying to fix it? Why now? I'll tell you why now. Because this project wants to get a rubber stamp, so it can get approved. Now, if they go with the beautiful technology of looking in there with the videos, which is great, and they find that, yeah, they think it, and what happens? Well, let's say they think it's going to work, that, you know, it's pretty clean, maybe a little, cleaning around, doing a little tender... a little bit cleaning around, doing a little tender loving care, and it'll get this sewerage flow a little bit better. Now, the board approves it and says, okay, good to go, we're going to have the water go out, no problems. What happens if there is a problem? Is the board going to say, this is a condition? If this is a problem, the taxpayers of East Chester are not going to pay for an additional sewerage lines, larger sewerage lines? I don't hear that discussed. And that's the problem that I worry about. If these pipes, the sewerage pipes and storm pipes aren't large enough or in good enough condition to take on an additional project like this, then who is going to be responsible? The builder? After it's approved? Is it going to be in writing if there is a problem? I haven't heard that discussed. And that is what I worry about as a taxpayer, that this project is sealing along when it was brought up numerous times about sewerage, it was already, we're not talking about it tonight. That's not one of the items. And that was mentioned. Go back to your videos and double check. So, if it wasn't exactly mentioned that night, you couldn't talk about it. Now, do we have a retaining storage for storm water in this project?
Retain, okay.
Detention system, right?
Okay. Answer is yes. I don't know what's on the drawings, but our consultant said yes, so yes, they do.
I'm sorry, I cannot hear.
Yes, they do.
Yes, there's a proposed stormwater management plan that's been reviewed and discussed and approved by our engineering consultant. No, it's good, Jim.
There is a, there is a holding.
Where are you going with this?
A holding, so that once it's possible to release that water, it's going to get released. Is that my understanding?
So, I don't know the, I don't know the design of that system. Our consultants do, and they've commented on it. So, if there was a problem with it, they would have made the comment and presented it.
We've heard, we've had this discussion.
I was going to say, Mr. Gallinick.
I'm old, a lot of my parts don't work. Can I ask you just to speak a little bit louder? Thank you.
Yes. You have brought this issue up at many meetings, and we have responded to the question, but also the plans are available, not only are the plans available online for you to review, I have personally emailed them to most people that have requested them, but they, so if you have questions about the stormwater management plans, those have been available online for review for months, as have Mr. Tramelli's review memos. And this is a question that keeps, keeps coming up. The stormwater management plan was prepared by the applicant, it was reviewed by our engineering consultant, it was reviewed by planning board members, the plans are available online, comment memos are available online as condition of approval, you know, there's some minor things that need to be kind of finalized as conditions of approval. So, I'm not quite clear what you're, what you're getting at this evening.
Well, first up, to answer your statement, and very respectfully, Margaret, I had asked for those plans, the drawings, the plans, a while back, and you said you were going to send them. Never got them. Not a big deal, no, you could check, check your stuff. I'll check them.
They're also available online by simply linking on.
At that point, you didn't say that.
And had you, and I'm not sure whether you sent me a follow-up email, because I just want to make it very clear, and I think Mr. Sweeney and anyone else in the Northeast Civic Association or at the enclave will tell you that I respond to each and every email and each and every request that I get. Had you, I might have mentioned something at a meeting, and I apologize if I didn't follow up, but had you sent me an email, those drawings would have been attached and sent to you immediately.
Okay. I appreciate that, but that was not mentioned what the conditions were. You said you would send it, okay? And I'm not here, I am not here to take my machine gun out and make Swiss cheese on you, of you. I'm not here to do that. All I'm saying, that's the thing. So, currently, we do have a system that's going to hold back this water. It hasn't changed, correct?
No.
No, okay. So, again, my final statement is going back to the original. If there's a problem, and we need larger sewerage pipes, larger storm pipes to handle this development, who's going to pay for it? Is that going to be written in that the developer is responsible for it?
No.
So, before you approve anything, I would, I would ask you to really think about that and, and...
Thank you.
Thank you. Right.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the planning board, Margaret and Richard. We've been at this for some time.
Sweeney, you're supposed to identify yourself for the record and your address.
Oh, yes. It's Frank Sweeney, 22 Lakeview Avenue.
Not that I was down.
Like all three of us here, we have about 150 years' worth of experience in living in the town. So, it's now a matter of where we're at and what we need to get done. But what we know now, which we didn't know in the last meeting, is now the MTA is off the, off the record. They're not going to allow them to go through the tunnel. They've also come back and said there's a proposal that it could cost $750,000 to put a pipe down underneath the track, which we still don't know is viable yet. What we have is the things that we thought were going to work. Currently, I don't think they're a workable solution right now. The net, net value of what we have is the mitigation. Do you want to see what mitigation looks like? Hope we can get this on TV. This is what mitigation looks like in my neighborhood. This is what mitigation looks like. It hasn't been solved. So, now, we're going to do a mitigation process and hope that we're going to get it done after the fact. Not going to happen, because this is what we have. The town was so nice, as they bolted down the headstone on the sewer. Guess what happened? All around the sewer head turned to garbage. So, I'm really concerned that somehow, after it gets out of here, we still got to get this to the Yonkers Processing Plant. Is that a fair statement? We've got to get it to Yonkers. How are we going to do it? This mitigation doesn't help me, doesn't help any of our neighbors in the North End. And you standing there looking blank, this is my neighborhood. This is your neighborhood. Let's not go forward until we resolve the mitigation. We're not in favor of mitigation, we want solutions. The solution, I went to the town board last week, identified that the town board needs to be involved in a capital appreciation in order to correct this problem. It's not the developer's problem. This is long due, 15 years, of waiting this to bubble up. And I'm sure you're all aware that when Margaret, back in March 18th, 1920, or 2020, wrote to the West Chester County Planning Board referral review, and they stipulated six or seven items, and I'm sure, I hope you've all reviewed this in detail, I'm sure you have, but it lays out the plan, what's going to be required, and I don't see the town doing it. The first one being, let's get these first. They wanted to see something about fair housing. They wanted to see pedestrian access, unbundled parking, county sewer impact, right here, number five. I know this is a referral agency, but they clearly lay it out, very, very pertinent things that need to get done. At the time of the ownership was passed, they recommended corrective action be enforceable. Stormwater management, number six. Was on to say, you need to get it solved and not wait for the issue to be resolved. Talked about green technology. This is signed by Norma Desmond, who is the Commissioner of the West Chester County Planning Board Referral Review. Now, I hope you've all reviewed this in intimate detail. It is a suggestion, but I don't see where we've actually taken it into consideration in this proposal, in this right place.
I think you're overstating. When, when memos such as this are sent to Margaret, I am pretty sure she pays attention to it and implements everything on it. So, by saying we don't pay attention to it, it's sort of minimizing the amount of effort that goes into this operation.
But, and I also want to clarify one thing. Mr. Sweeney, I think that, so the county letter from the West Chester County Planning Board, which is a letter that indicates recommendations for things for the planning board to consider, not requirements, in talking about this particular project, it says, let's see.
True.
Municipal governments require, they recommend that municipal, it's a policy that municipal governments require applicants to identify mitigation measures that will offset the projected increase in sewage flow by requiring the applicant discuss methods of inflow and infiltration mitigation. That's exactly what this board has required the applicant to do. So, the applicant has addressed issues related to inflow and infiltration, directly related to the increase in sewer flow, and they are proposing mitigation measures. So, that's, that is an issue that this board took very seriously from day one of this application in order to address that very concern that you showed us in the picture. You're talking about mitigation, I think the highway superintendent may have bolted down the manhole cover so that it didn't, you know, explode during rainfalls, et cetera. So, so, these are new mitigation measures that are being proposed specifically to help alleviate the problem that you're talking about. The reason that we're asking the applicant to do it is because we, we have a little bit of leverage right now. The county has said to us, it's a policy that you ask builders to do this. So, we're taking advantage of that and asking the builder to provide mitigation measures in relation to the sewage flow that they're adding. The second paragraph here talks about things that the town could do to implement, and what that talks about is doing, you know, recommends it's a town implement a program that requires inspection of sewer laterals from private homes. So, what they're saying is they recommend that we inspect homes within this neighborhood to see if there's any illegal connections. That's something totally separate and unrelated to this particular application and is a totally a town board.
When is it going to be done?
But again, that's a town board. Nobody on this board has that authority. So, but I wanted to tell you again, because you keep referencing this letter, the letter with regard to county sewer impacts has two very distinct and separate paragraphs. One relates to what the planning board's responsibilities are with regard to reviewing the application. They have taken this very seriously from day one. They've had the applicant identify proposed sewer flows, and they're requiring that he mitigate, provide mitigation measures to address those flows to alleviate the problem that you've pointed out. The second paragraph has to do with what they recommend that the town, that is 100% a town board determination, that nobody on this board has any control over, and it's totally unrelated to this particular application.
Can you tell me where the storm sewer and the household sewage comes together? Do we know that?
Well, Mr. Sweeney, you specifically brought up that memorandum.
Yes.
Okay? You specifically, and you said that, it says here that the county is recommending on new projects that the applicant show mitigation, and that's exactly what happened here. In terms of town-wide policy and what the town should do in the separate paragraph, those are issues that this board has no authority over, have to be addressed by the town board.
And you said you've gone to the town board, and you even said yourself, this is not an issue for this developer. You're right about that.
I went to the town board, and I got the same reaction. Everybody sat there with their hands on the table.
But that's not the reaction here. We're telling you, what you asked this board to do, they've done, and it's been explained to you on a number of occasions.
If I could, Rob, your very letter here, and Margaret stopped short of this paragraph, is the last sentence of the first paragraph on the section on county sewer impacts. It says, "The best means to do so," and that is mitigation efforts, "is through the reduction of I&amp;I at a ratio of three for one for market rate units." That three to one ratio, I personally have explained to you twice after hearing it from Mr. Tramelli.
Explain this to me twice.
That's a different issue. We're talking about a three to...
It's not a different issue. This happens every single time, get two inches of rain.
But that's what, that's what we're trying to help mitigate and alleviate.
Where are you going to process the sewerage and the stormwater to get it to Yonkers? That's all I'm asking. How are we going to get it there?
It's...
And you're saying it's the town board's responsibility. We have a developer here, and obviously, he wants to move ahead and do it, that's fine. Show me and tell me how we're going to get it to Yonkers. I don't think they can move forward without at least understanding how we're going to get it there. We know we're not going under the railroad tracks. We know we're not going through the tunnel. Where are we going?
We're going through the, and I'm not the engineering consultant, but we're going through the existing pipes. So, because the problem is, the problem, my understanding is, and again, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, it's not, there's not a capacity issue. It's not that the sanitary pipes can't accommodate the sewage flow. So, there's not, the sewage is going to go through the pipes and go on to Yonkers. The problem is during, the reason you get that picture when it rains is because rain, two reasons. Rainwater gets into the pipes through cracks and joints and that kind of thing.
I agree.
So, and the other reason is, very likely, people within the neighborhood have illegal connections. They're pumping water during rain into the sanitary sewer system, which is increasing water into those pipes so that you're getting that bubbling up. So, what we're trying to have the applicant do is repair some of those pipes so that the water doesn't infiltrate those pipes, create manholes so that the pipes can be more readily cleaned, so that the flow can go more freely through those pipes. So, the issue about going through under the tracks or through the tunnel, et cetera, that was to create a bypass to take some pressure off of that manhole. But that was only one of the alternatives that was totally unfeasible because of the cost of it. So, the sanitary sewer is still going through these same pipes. What we're trying to do is repair those pipes and make it easier to clean them out or to redirect the flow where we're repairing that one manhole, so that that manhole that bubbles up doesn't get all the pressure on it. But believe me, we have had hours and hours and hours of discussion trying to do our due diligence for one reason only, and that is to address the problem that you have a concern with. I guarantee you, the builder would rather do nothing. So, so, the only reason, you know, no offense to the builder, but the reason he's doing it is because you have a highway engineer, you have a director of planning, you have an engineering consultant, that have taken this issue incredibly seriously, but we have to do it within legal parameters, and that's what we've done.
I'm not questioning the legality or the effort that they put into trying to solve it, but the town hasn't solved it. The town hasn't solved it. And now, they're asking you to make a decision based on something that maybe is not going to get fixed. And the procedures, I appreciate the approval for the conditions for tonight, but again, it's after the fact. I'm looking for something upfront. That's all. Something upfront. The pipes, JMC, when we did the previous appointment, they were 80 and 90% at capacity then. That was about eight years ago. It hasn't changed. It hasn't changed. We'd like to see the project get through, but we can't live, what is this? But we can't live with this type of sewage and unknown. Everybody's sitting back and saying, "Not my problem." You know?
Well, I'm, I'm going to disagree with you there, because that's not what they've said. You've said the town has to do something, and the town board is designated for that process. This board has to make sure that this developer is not going to add to that problem. In fact, it's going to mitigate that problem on a three-to-one basis. And we have brought in engineers to make sure that that's, in fact, what they're doing. So nobody is sitting back. This is exactly what they're doing to address those exact concerns. You may not agree with them. You may want to see more. You may want to see that problem completely fixed. But the engineer explained, and Margaret explained, and the chairman explained earlier that it's not the responsibility of each applicant to fix the entire town's drainage problems. They have to show that they're not going to contribute to them, and they have to show a specific mitigation that's actually going to make the situation better.
The, the area that we're talking about, okay? It somehow has to get from Scarsdale Avenue to the Yonkers Processing Plant. That's a given. There's no magic there. It's got to get there somehow. Whether you mitigate it up on Brook Street or mitigate it down at the bottom of the street. It has to get to Yonkers Processing Plant.
Mr. Sweeney-
And now we're going to allow-
With all due respect, we've addressed all of the concerns. And what we've said is that any additional flows that have been put into the system have been mitigated. We're not solving any problems that are, that aren't already in place. So the amount of sewage or the amount of stormwater that's being put into the system is being mitigated by any changes that are being done. I'm not solving whatever questions you have about the Yonkers flow. And that's not what we're here to do.
All I ask is we need to do some more work. We're not there yet. Please don't do this to the people in the North End. There's too many unknowns. And I ask you to review tonight and defer your decision so someone, somewhere, whether it be town board or a combination of engineers, they can get together and prove to me we're going to get it to the plant. That's all. It's not, not rocket science. But you surely don't want to do this to the neighborhood.
Mr. Sweeney, you've shown us a photo of what exists now. If we do nothing, that's going to continue to exist. What our town, what our consultant has told us is that, and, and this is working with the highway department, working with the planning department, working with the developer, that this is, this is our, our best estimate of how we can reasonably affect positive change in the form of mitigation that will help the problem. I don't think you have the knowledge that Mr. Chmeli has, that the highway department has. You've been the victim of it, perhaps. You've seen and taken photos of the problem. But if we don't attempt to do something such as a mitigation effort here, it is going to stay the same. And as Mr. Bonanno said, the chairman, this is a, you know, a, a best effort to, to, first of all, to make sure that this application isn't going to make the system worse. But as Mr. Tedesco said, every effort is being made to assure, and there are no guarantees, but, but we have all the best minds on this. And with all due respect, people who know a lot more about this subject than I do, than, than Mr. Tedesco does, than the chairman does, than, than you do. And, and they are saying this is, this is our best opportunity to affect a positive change. And you want to stop it in its tracks because you want further guarantees.
That's not, I don't want to stop it in its tracks. I want a solution. That's all. Hey, solution.
That's what we're looking for as well.
The solution's been put forth. The solution's here. It's on the drawings, and it's what's going to get constructed.
But we surely don't want the thing built and then have those photos that I'm almost embarrassed to show on TV. Almost embarrassed. You wouldn't want to walk within a block and a half of that sewer.
Mr. Sweeney, have you, as, as the president of the Northeastchester Civic Association, talked to your residents about illegal connections or sump pumping into the sanitary sewers? Because that is likely one of the, you know, and again, I don't know for sure, but it, that likely is, is creating or contributing to that problem is people that during storm events, sump pumped into the sanitary sewer pro, um, system. And that's individual homeowners and individual residents, and that's what the county letter says. The town, it recommends the town to implement a program that requires inspection of sewer laterals from private homes for leaks and illegal connections to the sewer system, such as from sump pumps. So again, I'm not sure whether, people may not realize in your neighborhood that, that sump pumping into the sanitary sewer system contributes to this particular problem. So that may just be simply an education program, too. But I wanted to point that out to you because you are the president of the Northeastchester Civic Association. And this is something that residents have a very real ability to address if they're concerned about that particular problem, is, is ensuring that they're not pumping water into the sewer system.
I agree that there's two sets of sewer issues. One on Woodruff Avenue, most of those homes were built in the early 1950s. And they probably do somehow run into Woodruff Avenue. There's another group of homes that I live on, which happens to be Lakeview Avenue, built in 1921. I have no idea what those pipes do. None. No idea. But guess what? They flow down to Scarsdale Avenue. Now, if you're asking me to do a survey of the homes-
No, I'm not asking you that. I'm asking you if people are aware that if there's sump pumping into the sanitary sewer system, that they're exacerbating that problem. And not even people that may not be aware of illegal connections, but people that are physically sump pumping into a, into, say, a sink or something like that. I, I'm just making you aware of that. That's what this second paragraph implies. So, so, so that's something that members of the Northeastchester Civic Association could take personal, you know, could take some personal responsibility for to see whether that is exacerbating the situation in addition to the proposed mitigation measures that the, the planning board is imposing on the applicant right now.
I mean, we're not dodging the issue. These homes were built 70, 80 years ago. My home is over 100 years old. I'm not running away from the efforts, okay? All I'm doing is looking for a reasonable solution. And we all know, somehow, between Scarsdale Avenue and the Yonkers Processing Plant, which is on the other side of Goth Road, we've got to get something over there. That's it. That's it. I'd be more than happy to do a survey in terms of asking people who are using sump pumps. I don't know of any personally offhand. But there could be some people out there. But then, is that going to be something the town is going to take on as a responsibility to find out who is using a sump pump?
It's not a, it's not something we're discussing under this application. It was just a comment to bring it to your attention.
Okay. All I ask is we need some time. We ask you to take it under advisement and defer the decision until the September timeframe. I do appreciate your time and efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure, Mr. Galanek.
Good evening again. Just to recap a little bit on what Frank was saying. We have the sewage at a certain level right now. When you put in a large project like Ray Place, that's going to compound that level higher because there's going to be more water, sewage going through. And what I think Frank is, is asking is, or possibly saying or asking, is that over the last several meetings, one of the things was mentioned, and it's still mentioned again tonight, how the developer is going to actually go in and look in the sewage. And, you know, both ways. Inspection, and then also with cameras, which is great. But this has been going on. So I think what Frank may be saying is before you vote on anything to approve this, let's see the results from all this beautiful inspection that they're going to do so we have an idea what situation we actually have encountered from Brook Street down to the actual connections to the sewage. And again, as I said, if there's a problem and this gets approved, and they find out, or we find out, the town finds out, everybody finds out that unfortunately, this is, we've got a problem here. We need larger sewage pipes. Or the sewage pipes we have are old and dilapidated. They're leaking. They're doing this. And now we need new ones, and we're going to have to pay for them. Okay? And if they were going to pay for it, the developer, that would be fine and dandy. But reality, they're not going to do that. So, again, I think what Frank is, is alluding and saying is that before you give a rubber stamp on this thing, let's see what results we get back from their investigations, which has been mentioned over the last couple of meetings. And it still hasn't been done, to my, to my understanding. Okay? I thank you again.
Okay. Okay. So then, I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing on this application. 19-42, 5 Ray Place.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think we've exhausted all of the studies, and we've discussed this. And we certainly appreciate all the comments brought forth by your three gentlemen and its concern over your, your community and your roads. And I don't think that anything you brought forth has gone unnoticed and unresponded to by the towns, by the town, by Margaret or any of the consultants. That being said, I'm comfortable that what's been put forth is adequate and will be followed up clearly by our consultants, such that any design will be adhered to. So unless you gentlemen have another comments that you'd like to add or supplement or... I'm going to make a motion to approve this application. Gentlemen, we're good? So then I'll make a-
Yeah, we're good. I, I did want to just add that, you know, we're all residents of the town of Eastchester. If there are, and, and we all appreciate, particularly as Mr. Sweeney brought home in his photo, that there are problems up there, but it is not the, you know, we, we can't foist all of the problems of drainage of the North End on, on this single applicant. We can make sure that this applicant isn't making it any worse. And in fact, on our best estimates, is, is going to make efforts to make this better. And, you know, under those circumstances, given all the time that's been spent on this, and I did look, the first time the application was before this board was in October of 2019. So it's been a year and nine months. I, I do take umbrage at the thought that, that this board is ever a rubber stamp for anything. I know we've been accused of that by, by members of the North End before on projects that haven't gone through. We've been accused of rubber stamping. We don't rubber stamp things. We follow process. And I think the process has been followed very carefully and very thoroughly here. And, and I, I really have the utmost respect for the professionals who've been involved in this, the Margaret Uly's of the world, and the Joe Chmely's, and, and the members of the highway department. And, and from everything I've heard, the applicant, and everything I've seen, the applicant has been very responsive and cooperative and reasonable. And so under those circumstances, I don't have any further concerns.
Gentlemen, we're good?
I'm all good.
So then, I make a motion to approve, well, there's a whole list of conditions that we don't need to go to. Right, and there are-
Conditions.
Right, subject to the-
Conditions.
List of conditions of approval, that Margaret is on the screen, subject to those conditions, of which there's quite a few pertaining to construction and everything else. Rock removal. So subject to those conditions, I make a motion, a motion to approve the application. 1942, 5 Ray Place.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So that being said, I think we're done, right? So I make a motion to close the public hearing of, what's today's date? April, July 20th, 2021?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Have a good summer, everyone.
Thanks, guys.